All right, let's call the meeting to order, please. Dewile?
Here.
Chislin?
Present.
Thompson?
Here.
McSparron?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Everybody's present and accounted for. You've seen the consent agenda, I believe. You got any questions about? Is there a second?
One second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. No, all those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Four ayes, one nay, motion carries. All right, the next thing on the agenda is Resolution 60 dot four dot eleven dot two, Resolution two forty-one. Oh, yeah, I remember. Just some thoughts. I did give, go to the area fifteen that this week and sat down and talked with the generals to get more of our things, of our updates, the recodification, the changes that need to be made, and so they had that. He said if he had any questions, he would call me. So far, I haven't heard anything from him, so maybe he won't have any questions. I think that it was pretty thorough, what we did and how we did it, so it should be a question about that. In the near future, and maybe the long future, here in the city of Lake... We have a lot of, we have a number of opportunities and possibilities in the near future that we can help our city become a better place to live and also to work. Some of those opportunities will come disguised as improbable situations, that you can't take care of them, which they always do. But there's some things, you know, we have some more, in case you didn't know, we have some more problems in the streets, that that's something we're going to have to deal with. Talked to Dave about that. If we could ever get some warm weather, we might go ahead and do that, but that's something we're going to have to deal with. Painting and fixing up, there's some places around town that maybe we can get some volunteers or organizations together, we can maybe help make those, some of those things look a little bit better, so when people came through town, it might look a little bit nicer. We also have rag rise coming through, which is a number of people coming through that will be here for a short period of time, but there are, there's a lot of peripheral folks that come through with them. There's the news, you have the news people that are coming, you have the leaders, you have the vendors, you have the people that just travel by, the people that have their spare parts for their bicycles and all those kind of things. So there's a real possibility we may be overcrowded for a short period of time, and that's a chance to show off what we have and what we can do here. We have the corn carnival, which brings a lot of people that aren't normally here. You know, we have the car show on Saturday and the parade, and the kids games and similar things, and those are things that we have opportunities coming up that present some challenges, and some big challenges which we can have. When I volunteered the first time to run for office, I did so with the thought that maybe by taking part and getting involved, we could make this a better place. We've overcome some situations, we've overcome some things since I started in February, March of two thousand twelve, and in some ways, we brought the city together, in some ways, we are farther apart, or just as far apart as we were. Couple layers, I know, so one of the things on the agenda tonight, our clerk, as people drive by to make sure she's here, or they'll ask for information, and then come five minutes before it's supposed to close. Some of that along with following Dave around. Dave keeps a log of who and when people drive around and follow, check on him, make sure he's doing something. Thing about Dave is if he doesn't do anything, he goes home. And a lot of times, if he's sitting here in the office talking, he's not on the clock. Our clerk has been gone some, and the office has not been known, but nobody knows, except me and her, that she probably already talked with me before those things happened. It just seems to me that there's some childish things going on, that it's time that we need to grow up and do the things that are important to take care of our city. Rag rise is a big thing. We've got some of the vendors that have already called us, we're going to be working on and present probably next time at the meeting, the things of what we're going to charge those folks that are going to be here. The two biggest ones have already contacted us more than once, and as we did, we've had some other nonprofit organizations contact us about setting up some things, and as we looked last week and last month, in our ordinance, is that none of that applies, is supposed to apply to nonprofits. So those organizations, which we, I know that we've got the churches that want to do something, I know that the museums want to do something, we've had, we've VFW people involved in that that want to come and do something, I know that the Lions Club may want to do something. So those nonprofits, that will be done at no charge. Those who are not nonprofits and come from outside and travel with the group or whatever, they will have fees based on the size of the place where they want to be, and we're working on that, we've got some information on that, and we'll present that next month, probably ask somebody to get involved helping. Lot more information, we don't know, but they had one meeting, and they're going to have another one, and as far as that goes. We've got a couple people who are coming to town, is it this week or next week?
I've got one scheduled for this week, I'm not sure what day he's supposed to be here, and I've got one scheduled for next week that are coming in.
So we're making progress in that direction. We just, I know of two people, one that I know very well, that in the last month, let's say, no, before the last meeting, that were looking for a place to buy out this direction, and both of them said they would never live in Lakesburg because of all the bakery and stuff that goes on all the time. We're fortunate, grown up, just having our big boy panties, big girl panties, and just try to work together. I don't agree with all these folks all the time, and you probably don't agree with me, but I would like us to work together so we can make this a better place, but if we don't, it will never get there because it depends on us. So that's my report. Moving along with the resolution eleven point two, we've had numerous instances in the last three months or so, or maybe more, of folks coming in and asking for things that have required more than one, no than fifteen or twenty minutes to get. We called the Iowa League of Cities and asked them about, we talked to Margaret Jones, the IPIB, to find out, you know, what can we do, you know, what we can do, what can we charge for, what can we pass on, and she gave us some points, and we called out the cities, and they noticed the resolutions from some of the other cities around that are closer to our size. They told us that our fees for copies were way, way too low, as far as compared to everybody else, and so we took what they recommended, well, they don't recommend, they don't do that, they just gave us some copies, and we took those as far as what they were, and we came up with this resolution, which falls under the guidelines of what the law says is allowed. I guess I will read the whole thing, since all of you don't have copies. Whereas the City Council of Lakesburg supports the principle that good government welcomes citizen participation, and whereas every citizen has a right to examine and request copies of public records and documents as provided by the state law, and to seek answers and questions about the government, and whereas the Iowa Code provides that city may offset expenses for reproduction of copies, and instead not to be paid by the person desiring to access reproduction copies. Whereas the City Council of Lakesburg recognizes the need to ensure the protection of public records, provide equal access, and maintain orderly, efficient costs of effective administration. Therefore, be it resolved that requests can be made in person, in writing, by telephone, by electronic means, fulfillment of requests of a public record is contingent upon the receipt of payment of expenses. Requests for records shall be received during normal business hours. Examination, reproduction of documents should not exceed twenty working days on the date of the request. The city staff shall use the attached request form for clarification. Fees as follows: black and white, forty cents, colored copies, sixty cents. Staff research shall be charged at the rate of eight dollars per quarter hour, starting after the first fifteen minutes and assured every quarter, and assessed every quarter hour after. Request for copies in excess of fifty pages will require a fifty percent deposit. Fees for maps will be actual cost of printing the maps plus the charge per quarter hour based on the actual time span plus mileage between IRS to prove pickup, to pick up the maps. Those are maps that we're going to have to go to the courthouse to pick up, not the maps of the city that we have, that we have here. The fee for audio recording should be twenty cents. If the recording is emailed, if the CD is requested, the fee will be the actual cost of the CD, but still charged at five dollars per quarter hour based on the actual time spent in the reproduce the materials. The city shall provide copies in the same manner and the format as they are kept in the city offices. The law does not require special process in research and analysis or tabulation. Should such requests be made, they will require approval by the city council. Should the requester in the city agree to contract for such special process, and a fee of twenty dollars per hour will be charged. The city staff will estimate the cost of the total project, and a down payment of fifty percent of this estimate will be required prior to starting the work. The remainder will be paid on the delivery of the final project. All fees and services contained herein apply to all non-governmental requesting agencies. The charges do not apply to the mayor, council members, city attorney, city engineer, chairperson of boards and commissions, as long as the item pertains to city business and are not for intended for personal use. We talked with Margaret Jones of the IPIB about if we had, someone requests something, and we aren't sure whether or how to do it, and if we ask for attorneys to look that over something, whatever the fee the attorney charges us, that she charges half an hour, an hour, whatever it is, then this is included in the, we can pass that on to the person who made the request. I know that, at least in this last week, Roberta spent over an hour and a half redacting materials, so to give someone, which is, which was required, what was asked for, that we had to do that, any of those things. So this, it's not, sometimes in the past, our clerk has been kept from keeping the records and doing the things that she needs to be doing because she's been trying to make sure all these requests were taken care of, and so that's the reason for this. Any questions? Yes?
The library charges a dime, a copy placed, commercial copy placed, now church street charges a dime, I'm just wondering if we're a little on the high end there?
Well, according to the Iowa League of Cities, we're on the low end even at forty cents, because it's not just for the copy. Don't go to the bank, they charge a dollar.
If I could comment, if I remember right, we get charged for our copy, or I think it was at least ten cents per black copy and thirty cents per color copy, or thirty-five cents per color copy. So really, this is not much more over what we're paying for our own fees to use the printer itself.
Right. That's about what it costs whenever we make one of these copies, not including the paper probably.
I don't think that's rather high as well.
Well, I use a couple of libraries in the area, and copies there are fifty cents a page.
They're not very many.
Yes.
No.
They're both fifty cents a page.
I think that what's included in some of that is also the time that it takes for the person to make the copies.
We always had a pair prior. I think the last I know, we had eleven cents a copy.
A bit twenty-five for the last couple of years, I know, that we did that.
I think this is...
Well, these numbers can be changed. I mean, I think there should be at least twenty-five cents, maybe thirty cents for the black and white, and forty cents for the color.
We definitely can't give it under less than what we have to pay for it.
Right.
Absolutely.
We ought to look for whatever it costs us.
I don't agree with that.
I agree.
Because it does cost time, and she has to pull the stuff out of the file, and she has to look it up, or whatever it might be. You haven't considered that.
I know, that's just another thing with this city.
But it's not just something you're bringing to the paper and putting on the machine, this is something that she's actually got to go to the file and pull it out and do it instead of, if you're in the library, you're bringing yourself data copies.
For this copy like this, it should be whatever that she got on files, it shouldn't take much time to pull that out.
We're here to serve the people, not charge them on that.
We are a business, though. You guys see different, this city is a business, and we have to run to make money, or we're not going to have a city, and I feel like you guys just want to give the whole city away. We can't do that.
That's what's happening in this town right now.
Well, I'm not going to disagree, the way things are going right now, we need to start changing it, and this is a small step in making a little bit of money to help keep our city going.
Now, this part here, I do not agree with. Now, the rest of this...
What's your recommendation then?
A bunch of stuff that she has to do, and all, yeah, I can see that, but for just make a copy, and some of our regular records we have up here, I think forty or sixty cents is predicted.
Well, if it's one page, or forty cents isn't a big deal. Now, if you're getting fifty pages, then I can understand, yeah, that would be a lot, but then maybe you think if you can get it off the internet instead of, or something like that instead.
Well, I would propose that we make it twenty-five for a copy, and since it costs us thirty cents for a color copy.
Can I ask to table it until we have our exact numbers, because I'd hate to vote on it tonight and then find out we're going to lose money.
We can do that, if that's what everyone...
It'd be a motion to table.
I made a motion to table this at the last meeting.
And I will second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay. That would be tabled. The resolution sixteen dot four dot eleven dot one, last month, if you remember, and I, we moved three thousand dollars from the clerks to the ambulance, which found out that that's also part of the fire department, so we really want, need to put that money in there, and I think I brought around, I vetoed that resolution, according to the records, and gave everybody a copy of it, so they knew that that's what was going on and why that happened. We still need to move that three thousand dollars, and I was looking through the city council, mayor, and those kind, that thing. We have enough money in there. We don't have any money, any extra money. If we can't have any extra meetings, you know, special meetings, anything like that, we, there's not enough money in that account to take care of that. In fact, actually, it would be, it looked like it would be about twenty dollars short. So my suggestion is, is that we move that three thousand dollars into the mayor, council, city manager fund to take care of the extra, and then when we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, next year, we see that we have more money than we're going to need, then we can put that money someplace else where it's needed. So get resolved the city council of Lakesburg, Iowa, whereas the Lakesburg City Council approved to amend the twenty sixteen seventeen budget by removing the three thousand dollars from ambulance fund and placing it in the mayor, council, and city fund. So you're a motion.
Right. So some... I'm curious on your veto, and this resolution is two thousand fifteen.
Pardon?
It's two thousand fifteen on this resolution, and that veto was two thousand fifteen also, and we're doing it this year, right?
This date should, yeah, this date is wrong.
And that goes in our official records.
Well, we need to change that. The pass approved this eleven day of April two thousand sixteen.
But doesn't Iowa Code three eight four dash eighteen say that you can only amend during a current fiscal year?
We were told, because remember, I told you about the budget, that six o'clock in the morning it was sent, and so that we were advised of what we need to do to make that budget work out, to take that from the clerk and put it someplace else. So that's why we're doing it.
Right, but that's the two thousand sixteen seventeen, we're in fifteen sixteen now, correct?
And that's the budget that we approved before.
Right, but we're not in that year now.
No, we're working, but we're approving, we're changing that budget, we have to move that to make a balance, or then the budget that we submitted is completely out of whack.
Hasn't it already been certified?
Yes. That's why we need to do this, as far as to make it, because the money, the total money is going to be the same, but he had put that, and so we were advised, and we called and talked to the state about that, what do we need to do, and he said that you need to amend your budget, that was submitted, with that three thousand dollars.
Amended with the resolution?
Yes.
You don't have to have a hearing or anything when you amend the budget?
Not that I'm aware of.
With all due respect, I think you do need a hearing to amend the budget.
I'm, there's a whole stack of amendments, and we have removed the budget in there that, in our resolution, that I have never seen any public hearing involved with them. I mean, that's, from what I know. Do you have any idea?
Never heard of a, for an amendment, I've never heard of a public hearing, but if you want me to look into it, I can.
Then what do you wish to do?
The material may, I'm asking.
Yeah, we're not changing the amount of money in the budget, I mean, it just that it was certified with a different amount in Rome. We approved the budget, we had to hear to approve the budget, with three thousand dollars less in the city clerks, and the budget that was sent before, when we could get it at six o'clock in the morning, and we got to get hold of it until about nine thirty or ten o'clock that morning, it'd already been done, and so we asked what we should need to do, and this is what they said to do.
We placed it, and then you said we couldn't place it there, or you vetoed, so we couldn't place it there. So the money's floating out there with no home, is what you're saying?
Did they give us any timeframe when we had to have the resolutions?
Soon as possible. Well, that's why we got here.
Can I make a motion, please? Accept resolutions sixteen point four point eleven point one, with the change from twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen on the approval date regarding three thousand dollars from the ambulance fund, names, persons, and the mayor, council, city manager fund.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
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 So the motion carries. Didn't, they didn't care. I don't know about our money. We may be in more trouble by not doing it than we would be by doing it, or you to Ted Nelson's office there for this. You know what I don't have in my back? Sure, that's easy to do, say. All right. Next on the agenda, proposed twenty eighty agreement. Rich? Cindy? Well, you might want to guess, there's Flasch's case, and that's an agreement, and you go to the doctor, the eye doctor, and he says that you're a, nothing after that is any good, nothing that he says after that is good. It's great. Thank you very much. All right, this is the amendment, agreement and contract under Iowa Code twenty eighty with the fire protection emergency response between the city of Lakesburg, Iowa, township of Adams, Waukato County Township, Marion Davis County Township, Polk, Waukato County Township, Union and Appaloosa County, and the township of Urbana in Monroe County. Whereas the above stated city and townships are required pursuant to the law three sixty four dot sixteen and fifty nine dot forty-two to provide fire protection services to the public, and whereas chapter twenty eighty code of Iowa provides that powers, privileges, or authority exercised by a public agency of this state may be exercised jointly with any other public agency of this state having such powers, privilege, and authority. And whereas the parties heretofore are desirous of entering into twenty eighty agreement to render fire protection emergency response, wherefore the parties heretofore mutually agree to join together to form a fire department providing a fire protection and emergency response to the cities, to the city and townships under the following terms and conditions: Lakesburg Community Fire Board, this agreement shall establish and create a joint administrative agency known as Lakesburg Community Fire Board, here I refer to as the Fire Board. The board's governing board shall be composed of six members, one from the city council of the city of Lakesburg, and one trustee from each of the above named townships. The board shall have the full power, authority, and responsibility to provide fire service and emergency response of the area served. The parties shall hold an annual review process where the board will present information to the parties' agreement concerning the board's operations, services provided, and any other relevant issue pertaining to this agreement. Area served, the legal description and map of the area that the board shall provide fire protection emergency response to as attached exhibit A and as incorporated before set forth here under this passment's area served. Mutual aid agreements, it is agreed that the board's fire equipment may be used in fire protection areas outside the area served, and of course, with mutual automatic aid agreements between the board and other jurisdictions to assist each other in the event of an extraordinary emergency. Services provided, the board should provide fire protection and emergency response services to the area served. Services shall be provided to the public without regard to race, color, religion, sex, or national origin, and consistent with other public services. Contribution to the board, it is agreed the city shall pay the board a its full complete consideration for services provided pursuant to this agreement in equal amount to sixty cents every thousand dollars of total taxable value of city property. It is agreed that each of the above named townships shall pay sixty cents per thousand dollars of total taxable value of the township's property, and the board may, by majority of vote of its members, increase the rate of contribution to the board.
Sorry, I thought we were supposed to send a paper to you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I know, we handed out last time, don't, I don't know if we printed them all this time, did we?
No.
Sorry. Now you interrupted me. The board may, by a majority of vote of its members, increase the rate of contribution to the board, in which all parties shall be bound to pay the parties of this agreement trusty agreement. They will comply with any decision of the board to increase the rate of contribution to parties, all parties need to pay. However, any party may terminate their involvement in this agreement through the process described in paragraph thirteen of this agreement. Duration of the agreement shall commence on the, let's say, April eleventh, two thousand sixteen, and shall continue indefinitely with an annual review process between the parties unless earlier terminated or court-put term to this agreement. Terms of this agreement shall be in full force and effect unless modified or terminated in accordance with this agreement and all other applicable law. Equipment, the city of Lakesburg will transfer ownership of all equipment currently owned by Lakesburg Fire Department and listed as exhibit B to the board. Then, if this agreement is terminated, ownership of the equipment shall revert back to the city of Lakesburg. During the term of this agreement, the board shall preserve and maintain the equipment in good repair and working order. If this agreement is terminated, all equipment and any other property owned by the board on the day of dissolution, including equipment and other property purchased by the board after this agreement has been executed, shall be transferred to the city of Lakesburg. The city of Lakesburg shall transfer ownership of the real estate described in exhibit C during the term of this agreement. Then, if the agreement is terminated, ownership shall revert to the city of Lakesburg. The board shall be responsible for the upkeep of the ownership and shall revert to the city of Lakesburg. The board shall, never mind. The real estate, including but not limited to renovations, additions, major capital replacement, and ongoing structural maintenance... The real estate, including but not limited to renovations, additions, major capital replacement, and ongoing structural maintenance, the board shall consult with the city prior to adding additional or new enhancements, including but not to ventures, signage, landscaping, and rest area development. Liability and indemnification, the board shall at all times during the term of this agreement and thereafter indemnify, defend, and uphold the city and the townships harmless against all claims and expenses, including legal expenses and reasonable attorney fees arising out of the injury or death of any person or persons out of, out of domine damage to property against or any other claim proceeding, demand, expense, and liability of any kind whatsoever resulting from any action or inaction. The board should provide and maintain the following insurance coverage from companies and agents properly licensed officers to business of the state of Iowa. Public liability, including coverage for direct operations and independent contractors, contractual liability, and completed operations with limits not less than bodily image, bodily image liability, two million dollars for each person, property damage liability, two million dollars for each occurrence. Workers' compensation, including Iowa employers' liability in accordance with the workers' compensation laws of the state of Iowa. Malpractice, errors, and omissions coverage for all firefighters and officers for errors and omissions and the performance of their duties to the maximum limit of no less than two million dollars. Management liability, two million dollars per occurrence. Default, for a purpose of this agreement, event of default under this agreement and terms of event of default and defaults, so mean failure of either party to observe, perform any conveyance condition or agreement on its part for the, to be observed or performed for a period of thirty days after written notice. Specifying such failure and requesting that it be remedied is given by the other party. Unless such notifying party shall agree in writing for an extension of such time practice expiration. However, if the failure stated in the notice cannot be corrected within the applicable period, the notifying party shall not unreasonably withhold its consent to the extension of time if corrective action is instituted by the party notified party within the applicable period and guilty pursuit until the default is corrected. B. Whenever any event of default under this agreement occurs and is continuing, the non-default party, defaulting party, has the right and sole option without further notice to demand and resolve the matter by remediation or arbitration pursuant to article fifteen of this agreement. Terms of the agreement, this agreement constitutes the entire agreement between the parties pertaining to the subject matter thereof and supersedes all prior agreement, letters of intent, understanding, negotiations, discussion of the parties, whether oral or written. Each party has had ample opportunity to consult with independent counsel of their choosing and states that they fully understand the terms of this agreement. Modification of the term of, this agreement may be modified or terminated upon mutual written consent of all parties. In the event that any party to this agreement shall desire to withdraw from or terminate this agreement, that party shall complete a written notice of withdrawal delivered to all other parties by hand delivery or certified mail by the first day of the month, which is at least one hundred and eighty days prior to the date of termination. Filing, this agreement and any modifications or amendments thereto, when executed, shall be filed at the secretary of state and filed and recorded with Waplo County Recorder become effective as provided by section twenty eight E dot A of the Code of Iowa. Alternative, dispute resolution. In the event that any party to this agreement are unable to resolve dispute involving this agreement and another party or board, then the parties will arbitrate and mediate the dispute instead of or before resorting to litigation in court. Mediation will be non-binding unless it resolves in a settlement. Arbitration will be by an agreed upon arbitrator, and if no arbitrator can be agreed upon, by a three arbitrator panel, with each party choosing one arbitrator, and the, with the two chosen arbitrators arbitrage. Arbitrator, yeah, no, choosing the third arbitrator. Governing law, this agreement and the rights and obligations of the parties herein under shall be governed by and construed and interpreted in accordance with the laws of the state of Iowa applicable to contracts made to and be performed wholly within Iowa without regard to choice of conflict of laws or rules. Venue of any law, so, premise upon this contract or a party's rights under shall be in the Waplo County. Severability in a previous agreement which is prohibited, unenforceable, or not authorized in any jurisdiction as to such jurisdiction ineffective to the extent of any such prohibition, unenforceability, or nonauthorization without invalidating the remaining provisions thereof or affecting the validity, enforceability, or the legality of such provisions in any jurisdiction unless the ineffectiveness of which provision should, would result of such material change as to cause completion of the transaction contemplated hereby to be unusual. Feel like making eyes and a sentence between those, and they could talk on and on and on, fill us. We're almost done. Third party beneficiary, this agreement is solely for the benefit of the parties and their respective successor and permitted assigns, and no other person has any right, benefit, priority, or interest under the, or because of the existence of this agreement. Failure or delay, no fair in a part of any party to exercise, or in no delay in exercising any right, power, or privilege herein under shall operate as a waiver thereof. Nor does any single partial exercise of any right, power, or privilege herein to preclude any other further exercise thereof or the exercise of any other right, power, or privilege. No notice to or demand on any party, in this case entires such party to any other further notice or demand in similar or other circumstances. That's all of it. We wanted to approve that at the last meeting. This is the second reading. I have any, any discussion or, I didn't have any motion? Yes.
Trying to get my head around all these numbers.
Okay.
In fiscal year twenty seventeen, we will be paying sixty per thousand, just like all these other townships that are involved. And that was probably brought up at the last meeting, roughly within a thousand, how much is that?
Seventy two hundred dollars, seventy three hundred dollars.
Seventy three hundred. And did we budget for that?
We budgeted for more than that, we budgeted for twenty thousand dollars because that's what it's been, and so. That's, we have enough money in the budget, so.
Go on forward, we're good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, I know that we were supposed to agree on amount of money, and I've gone over a lot of paperwork, I've got a lot of legwork going to different courthouses and that, and I can't agree with a lot of the numbers that have been presented to us. I think that possibly if I was able to have opportunity to hash out some stuff, it might set better with me. For starters, if you want, I can start picking off things. And I don't know that, you mentioned that the number that we got was a little bit different, so I don't know what's been changed since I saw this. Maybe that might help.
The number you got is fifty three eight nine eight thirty nine, right?
I think it's originally.
And the number that I have is fifty one six forty four thirty nine. That's basically as of today. And there are some bills that, a couple of them are on your bills list, that the Sunde Fire equipment and the fifty dollars of fire service, was it the Carter Miller sixty five, have all, have on the list to be paid. And basically, we have, the point is, is that there are bills outstanding right now for the fire department, come to fourteen thousand fifty two dollars. I was in there, wrote all this down, and I had to run a tape on it. Oh, here it is, right here. Fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty seven dollars.
Outstanding bills?
Yes, that, that's the fire truck.
Oh, interesting.
Fire truck payment, Sunde Fire thirty eight hundred dollars, fire service fifty dollars, Carter Miller sixty five, the electric one hundred and fifty six.
Everything but the fire truck payment is already figured into that fifty one?
It is.
Yep. It's on her account and it's on my account.
Well, here's part of my problem with the accounts, and I'm just going to be blunt. Some of the things that appear on the account appear to be from pay cash from the different fundraisers that you guys have held. And that was not receiveded into the city hall from what I understand, and I even see like a payout probably from one of those. And I can't approve a budget that isn't correct because of that.
Anything that was brought in was brought in by the clerk, it wasn't brought in by me, money wise, so it has to be received. I, I didn't take anything to the bank. All monies were brought in to the clerk.
No, because.
Cash, all the cash.
No, because when you, when we talked on Friday, you, you had that money for the deep diddle dinner, and you said that was in the pad of cash out there.
No, no, the cash, it's seven hundred and thirty five dollars and then thirty five dollars.
I did all the, the plus minus effort and those.
Yeah, that's on your, that's on yours.
These are, they're monthly budget where they try to work together and come to an agreement. And as a finance officer, I feel obligated to look over this, and another thing I'm having trouble with, and Roberta's explained to me that the townships pay.
November's, uh, November's letter.
Um.
I'll have to look at mine.
But the numbers I got from the courthouse aren't quite matching the numbers that are showing on this. And I know that the townships pay in, and I've been able to contact with some of the township representatives and got those numbers and been able to get things to match, but some of them don't match. And that still unsettles me because I just don't feel comfortable with numbers that aren't quite diving. And I'm not trying to be awful because I want to be fair. My purpose is I want the city to be feeling like they got their fair share and the fire department to feel like they got their fair share. Because if we don't, the turmoil is going to continue, and so and so didn't do something for so and so, and I don't want that, we don't need that in this town. So please forgive me because I'm not trying to be awful, I'm just trying to double check everything and make sure that we're in a good spot.
What numbers are you talking about?
Which township? You don't know what you're supposed to do, it's what you do.
Well, you guys have listed as Lake City Fire Tax, and here on, it comes in on quarterly payouts.
Yep.
Um, the city, Waplo County, when I went and I got printouts from the townships from Polk and Adams and the city, they gave me all in separate numbers.
Yeah, they're all separate.
Right, those don't show on here. And I tried to make them drive with trying to make the numbers fit, like maybe it came in in different months, and some of them did. They showed deposits in different months, but some of these deposits aren't coming up to the right amount. And to be honest with you, right now, you're going to love this, it's in your favor. So, I mean, I don't know.
The deposits, I know a minor what she gets.
So, um, you know, I, I don't mean, I, I'm not trying to be bad because as a city person, I want to protect a city, and I want to be like, heck, I want our money, you know, I forget you, you're leaving. But I don't feel like I can do that as an honest person, so, um.
I have a small issue here. If these are monthly, number one, there's no date, and that, that's not old school, there's no date up here anywhere on this.
Oh, she actually gave me a list, I have a list that matches everything they were talking about that have dates. And I have my own spreadsheet too, where I was trying to make everything work, I spent a lot of time on this guy, so I'm not just blowing smoke for you.
But every one of these sheets says first quarter, you know, when I left school, three months was a quarter.
Well, here they have it, July, if you look down here, it has the August dispersments, and then it came in, and then she's got matching printouts that went with each one of these. However, I know this came before they talked to each other, and then she was able to fill me in on some things that were, that they had come together and they found errors on both their parts. So I know you guys are working together, I know that that's coming about.
Now, what, what numbers are off?
Um, like the eighteen twenty five for Lake City Fire Tax, I see that on quarterly deposits. When I come in to my different printout from the courthouse, hold on. I don't, see, I don't know if you, I don't really, you're going to be able to go over everything here, because probably you have to check me and see like, hey lady, that's not in that right spot, but it's going to take a long time. I've got several of them. And I don't, I'm not trying to pull y'all off, I'm just trying to be honest.
The eighteen seventy five was set up a year ago or so where the balances would come out quarterly instead of.
Monthly?
Yeah.
Okay, because like if I come down, let's go to October, October's a big month.
Quarterly numbers are not going to match accounts because.
You take seventy three hundred and set it up quarterly.
That's your tax payments.
That way the city's not paying like seventy three hundred dollars in one shot.
Right.
And that's the way that's set up for Lake City.
So like in October, you guys showed a positive eighteen twenty five, for example, as you mentioned in the quarterly. When I come over here and I checked ones that aren't showing on here, I have Adams Township, three thousand six hundred ninety seven dollars, that's a lot more than eighteen point five. That's in your favor.
Adams Township.
Mm-hmm, was paid out. And I can't find that anywhere in here, I couldn't even get it to match if I totaled things up. And, you know, because like I have one in another month, it did total. For example, on July, I had payouts from the courthouse that showed different, and, and it totaled up together on the printouts if I add them all together, but I, I can't, I don't know, I've got this whole sheet here, all the yellows are the questions on these for things I looked at, and then I've got a whole list in here of all kinds of yellows, so.
Well, the eighteen twenty five for Lake City and what ever you have for Adams is not going to be the same. Adams pays more than what Lake City does right now. Adams pays, I think, somewhere around sixteen thousand a year total.
Becoming the entire township, thirty six square miles of Adams.
The eighteen twenty five for the city of Lake City is just what the city itself pays for fire tax, and that's it.
So you guys are including in, you're saying to me then, if I understand you correctly, what you're asking us to pay you does not include part of your fire tax?
No, that is the city's fire tax.
That's the city's fire.
Okay.
Seventy three hundred total for the year.
But the fire, but this three thousand six hundred ninety seven eighty five, and I don't know, maybe Roberta didn't give it, maybe it doesn't. That is supposed to be Adams Township fire tax that was paid to the city.
Tom, that has nothing to do.
And that's what I'm saying, that's not showing on here, so that's why.
Which month was that in?
This was in October.
Is it still on the ledger?
No, and I don't know if Roberta, I haven't got a chance to talk to Roberta about this because.
See, if it's not in the ledger, you were back off whatever was in the ledger, as far as how we figured stuff out, as far as what was, what was allowed for us, and that's how we come up with this.
Okay, well, I, I, I'm just saying, I didn't get to talk to Roberta about everything, I called her and talked to her some today, but I have to work.
And it might be wrong there too, because we did have some.
All the townships are up here.
Yeah, but we had some townships that down, further down that we.
So I guess I propose, I know you guys want to be done with us today, but I really propose that we actually wait till the third hearing, and we all, like we get the people together and sit down and look at this, and we get the documents we need and we figure it out right. And I, I just, that's my feelings.
We had to table it, but my suggestion would be that we table this until, and pick a time to make that especially you just talked about, that that would be my suggestion that what we would do, we could work it out, say, in two weeks.
Okay.
Well, you can approve the second reading, but if we go to a third reading, I don't know if that would happen though. You can approve a second reading, but forced to go to a third reading.
My, my third, my, my other comment is, and forgive me all because I, I just feel like I'm the bad apple here.
You are.
I know, I'm so proud of myself, I can be the little pink in your arm right now. Okay, no, anyway, my next thought is, I know you guys have suggested that you think it's a lot of money for us to come up with, and I don't know what the total's going to be. And it probably is, and the way the budget runs, you know, and all of our taxes come in all at once, and we have to get out, and we're thinking maybe we could make payments. I am very concerned because once you guys separate, you know, all the fire money's gone. And yeah, I know we've budgeted a little ahead, but I think that we also need to consider before our final hearing, we need to kind of know what we're going to be able to afford to give you, and if it has to be in a payment form of how that's going to be. So, I mean, I guess, I just, I just want to voice that opinion about things.
Let me give you the, this is something, a working, a working sheet.
I know you guys have suggested something, I've already seen that, I think that's what this is.
And I think it's probably reasonable whenever whatever that number ends up being, that.
Thank you.
Seven. Yes, again, mind what you. That we make the last two payments for the fire truck, which would be the one this year and one next year. And the savings account, which what was that number that came up from the ten thousand nine hundred? Oh, ten, the ten thousand two hundred ninety two dollars.
Same as ten thousand two hundred ninety two.
Yes, and so that one, that one would go to them.
Okay, that makes you go there in eleven thousand.
Yeah.
So I was looking at that going, that's a little high, but I remember it, so.
So, yeah, so that, and then the other one would be balanced, let that, if we do that, two payments of eight thousand dollars or something as far as that goes, one in eighteen and one in two thousand nineteen. Plus, we have to pay the seventy three hundred dollars.
The savings money is in the savings account, sorry, I messed up.
Yes, it's not in the regular budget.
I thought it was in the savings, I just want to make sure.
So, that's, that's a worksheet to work off of as far as, you know, where we go.
There's fifty one thousand six hundred and some, and now that's, let's say, the fire count, fire fund.
Yes.
Isn't that money dedicated for that use?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes. Yes.
So we should have enough in the bank right now to cover that, right?
Should.
Not because it's set in a general fund. The, uh, the general fund setups where some departments can cover other departments that are sitting negative. So basically like fire departments total fifty-one six forty-four is paying for part of the city's negative.
And this isn't something that just started this year or I don't realize this.
Anderson, you also said it is not uncommon to have a city with anywhere from a hundred to three hundred thousand negative just in the government.
And I mean, we even talked about that in our budget meeting because there's a section that's negative. But after all so long, it's gonna be out of the negative and-
Yeah, that's the goal that the council and the city as a whole, what you used to do is when they do the budgets is try to budget for less each year to try and get your positive, get close to your positive.
This fifty-one thousand we'll talk about, that would've been created by what was budgeted each year and your carryover because it was dedicated-
No, that's not what was budgeted. That was actual fire tax that came in. It's carryover, actual taxes that came in.
And there has been, yeah, it didn't start this year, last year, the year before. It's been, uh, it's been going on, uh, for a while as far as that goes.
What's the timeframe, Jason, where you, um, came up with the fifty-one thousand six forty-four?
This, it starts from last year's, the end of June to now. And then it, it just carries over off of each year's.
Okay, so this is just for one year?
No, this year, uh, July first of this year, we started out at twenty-four, twenty-five thousand in the account. And then just from this year, that, what that number is, is just what we've had come in in taxes for fire tax.
So it's based on the balance of last year and across this year?
You can, you can get a great big honking check and then the next month you're gonna get a check for ninety-seven cents.
Well, like two years ago, I think in December, we had one township dump twelve thousand dollars on us. And then another township dumped sixteen. We had like eighteen thousand dollars in one month and then we made four months of nothing come in.
Well, then you'd get like from one of the Monroe counties, you'd get thirty-seven cents.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's when people pay their taxes.
When they pay their taxes, yes.
Well, it's a lot of it also is townships in the past hold their-
They get interest off of that.
Yeah. Then they send it all at one time instead of-
Right.
They keep the interest and then send us the bill or the tax.
The type of money that goes to the township comes from the treasurer's, or the, yeah, the treasurer's office.
And the townships, uh, also know that now they can't hold that money. They gotta, once they get it, they need to send it to us, well, to the bank account. So the fire department's got the money to operate on.
And I just want, I'm sorry, I just want to say this. My, I just personally want to give a thank you out to my mother for helping me get all this stuff from the courthouses and the townships because I couldn't do it all by myself. So, sorry, I just have to say that.
If you transfer money from fund to fund, you have to do that by resolution. Is that right?
For-
Like if you, if you take money from one fund?
Like say from the water to sewer.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd have to-
It's gotta be done to resolution.
Say if sewer borrowed twenty thousand from water, then it has to be done with a resolution. It, and the, uh, there has to be a repayment by the sewer to the water, an agreement set up.
And for many, many years, it was no repayment plan?
No, there was none of that.
Nothing?
At the end of, uh, June, they'd have a bunch of resolutions transferring money from here to there to there just to make numbers look real.
Yeah, there was never a repayment.
Yeah, they're all in the resolution, but-
And I'm afraid the payday is counting, hasn't it?
Yep.
Uh, one, one, just clarification. So this fifty-one thousand, that was as of yesterday. And theoretically, that changes every day. If that comes in or bills go out, so that's a dynamic number.
That's why it's roughly two thousand dollars different than last month.
So every number will pretty much stay the same, other than the ending number of the two payments that will be made.
Right. But it's, it's a dynamic number, so in two weeks, if you got a big thing in, if the city's trying to play a cap on thing, if you've got more taxes coming in, that should be in the balance.
Right.
Like Friday, we had fifty-three thousand and something. Then with the consent, with the bills, it took it down fifty-one thousand.
Yep. So every day it could change.
Right.
So what will happen is when you do the final approval, whatever that amount is at that moment is what you guys will sign off on.
Right. And that's, and I guess what we put in the resolution originally was per the date of-
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea to set down in, uh, just go overall.
So basically, if a bill's outstanding, comes in after separating, we will pay it. And if we get some tax money trickle in, maybe you get-
Actually, you'll have a date where it would be cut off and all bills will cut off.
Agreement. Once it's done, then all the liability transfers over to the fire board. And, and so if, if money comes in or the bill comes in, it transfers to them.
It's blew it up till the day and then that's it.
Yeah, there'll be a date you guys set.
The only thing that we were gonna ask is that we set an insurance date cutoff, like about twenty to thirty days out. Give us time or more if needed to get our insurance.
So both parties have everything on both sides can be, say-
We do have to have a copy of the liability insurance.
We don't know what the total costs.
Yes. Once, see, that's the other thing. That's the date that we need. So our insurance can be upgrade, they can upgrade and give us our payout or, uh, printout so we can get to you guys your company.
Another thing I'd like to ask is I understand we still might have some outstanding receipts too from the fire department. We need to get those resolved because we need to get, we only get copies too for you guys so that you, we have copies and you have copies in the transition as well.
What, what receipts are you talking about?
There are still some credit card receipts, not some current in.
Oh, oh, I see, I see.
That'd be the only other thing I can think of.
They've been paid by a fire department. It's just, oh-
It just, we have some documentation and then, I mean, you guys will have copies obviously too for your purposes in the future, so.
The, the one good thing about this whole thing is that, uh, when this happens, we'll know that, well, I know we're gonna make sure that nothing, we don't have to give that, that hold again. You know, by letting, basically, we have let the townships fund like for fire department for-
Yeah, the city hasn't received any fire tax for years.
Yeah. So we, the, our, our part has not been taken, so it's kind of like they're called, okay, yes, this has happened and it could happen in another fund, but, uh, uh, but it wasn't. My suggestion to a word, and we talked about it, is that any money now that comes in for the fire department, that we take that and put it in another account. So, you know, we get a five thousand dollar check from Adams Township tomorrow. That does not go in the general fund checking account. The balance, we're gonna put that someplace else. So that, in that, that'll take care of that. Any of that money that comes in will now be definitely in the-
Can we just put it in their savings account since we have a payout anyway and they can put their money where they want it?
Yeah. But we can, but we can do that. We'll do, so that it, we, so we don't continue to have this gigantic, you know, five thousand dollars here and a paid out twenty-eight dollars there and here. That, where that money comes, we'll just have that someplace so we can just take and get rid of that, at that time.
Uh, can I ask one other question?
Yes.
This isn't anything about, uh, the actual money amount. Uh, the money in the bank, somebody told me that was kind of a fun setup to, in case a firefighter got hurt or something and in case of a firefighter death. And that was a long time ago. That was-
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, so it's- And the reason we're gonna use that for insurance is because the new insurance actually covers that now. A, actually covers it a whole lot more than what that ten thousand dollars is. Is that it really?
Yes, it's ten times better. It's more expensive, but it's a lot better. It doesn't only, uh, protect the firefighters, but it protects the officers and decisions they make and the board and decisions they make.
Yeah, I read, read that. It deducted two million dollars for what you said. And like the last truck that got wrecked, the insurance company only paid us the fifty thousand that we borrowed for. The new insurance will pay us, uh-
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Replacement cost?
Yeah.
Well, we, we actually consent to replacement costs.
But that, that's what it's just.
Right.
And we set it at a hundred and fifty thousand because there's no way we're gonna buy a new truck. You know, we'll just, you know, we bought two perfect trucks for this department used for a lot better price than new. And we love them.
We are, we're in on that.
And, yeah, and for no one, we paid for them and if one, something does happen to one, we, it just paid for itself three times.
With this second reading, we need to, actually do need to take a vote on the second reading and then move it to the third reading when we have more information, which, uh, I'd like to see if we could do that yet this month. If you could get together and find, get the data and work that out so that we can maybe have a special meeting before our next meeting.
What you could also do is have a motion to have one or two council members present the acts as to meet with the fire department, do a fact investigation so that they can report back to the board for the final reading so that any questions the board might have, one member will know.
And I think that's what we're, you know, Cindy's already involved in that and Bill's are represented to the fire board. So I think that those would be the two. Would that be okay with the vote? To, to, to look at that and vote those, you know, meet and then come back. It would be nice if we could do it within, in two weeks before this month is over, but just because we try to get on, on, uh, finally we'll come to some kind of, but if you don't, but if that's too soon, I mean, the point of, I'm not saying that's casting concrete, but if you guys could work, get together and work to that end. And then if you say, no, we can't do it, then we'll, we'll go from there, but, uh, that would be a possibility. This is what, the eleventh? Two weeks will be the twenty-fifth?
Do you want the Thursday?
One oh twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, it'll be Wednesday, right? I know Tuesday's a bad day for you, right? What about Thursday? Wednesday's a better day for you because you don't have to work, right?
Thursday, if it's in the evening, I have to take tests to dance.
Okay, well, let's, why don't we tentatively set that time for Wednesday, the twenty-seventh of April? If we could add those numbers then. We're not gonna make that a most, I, I can call a special meeting for then. But in the meantime, just tell me yes or that that's gonna work or no, that's not, that's too soon.
Wednesday is my stop for all the meeting.
Seven o'clock.
You better bring treats for Roberta because that's administration professionals' day.
Oh, no. Hopefully here, it's the same thing. Okay. Okay, so you want a motion? Yeah, we need a motion.
We'll make a motion that we approve the second reading of the twenty-eighty re, twenty-eighty agreement.
I'll start it. Okay. And we moved to second and this tells you to combine into the third one. All those, we're gonna, we're gonna vote and I'm gonna do roll call, okay? All those in favor, say, if I may say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All those abstaining.
Abstaining.
The wild?
Aye.
Chisman?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Xperin?
Aye.
No. Mitchell?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, so the third reading, we'll try to do it on the twenty-seventh of, of April.
So do we need to make a motion to appoint people to?
Uh, no, no, we, do, we want, I mean, she's already the finance officer. He's already appointed you.
I'd make a motion to-
You can make it.
I think I can make it.
See, I'm gonna have to make a motion that we act, uh, ask Cindy and Bill to be our representatives and that the negotiation, and Roberta will be there for it. Second?
I'll start it.
All those in favor, say if I may say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. You could have voted.
I said aye.
Oh, you said so, sorry.
I'm sorry.
See, when you're, when you're playing me down, it's real love when you're trying to make nice.
You know, I almost brought my little flag. I have my little flag. So guys, say vote, roll call, you know, whatever I gotta do.
Other on the agenda, you're having your yard sale on the fourth of June?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, you're okay. My suggestion would be that if we're gonna have a citywide yard sale, we'll do it in conjunction with that so that we'll get more people here.
We missed Jay.
Pardon?
We missed Jay.
Um, Jay was a carryover from the last meeting that really, uh, the, the library board takes care of that. They're not hiring a substitute that they're, that was in the near future. Both Cheryl and, uh, Chris would be gone and they need a substitute. And they have someone who's been in the library before that they, but they don't have to ask us. Last week, year, month, we appointed a library board member and that's why that's still, but it's not, it's not actually anything that we have to do. So, yard sale on June fourth, we can get details out later, but if we push the date, then that will be to let people know. And in conjunction with that, the next, the next, I am, okay. Do I have a motion concerning the citywide yard sale?
When is the, like, the other towns having theirs, like Eddieville and-
Like theirs is earlier.
Yeah. Rayville's usually in the March, but I know Eddieville's-
Eddieville's in sometime in the middle of May, if I remember.
Yeah, last year, same time.
Yeah, we did, that's why I think if we do it in June.
It was.
Theirs is over, theirs is in May, I'm pretty sure. Had it in the last two years. But, uh, we, June fourth, June fourth is a good date because all the people get paid on Friday the third. So they'll have money to buy gas and come out and spend it.
It's a hard amount.
Yes.
You guys having a spring cleanup?
So, we're doing this first.
That's next.
Okay. So I need a motion concerning June fourth as a, as the citywide yard sales.
I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now, citywide cleanup, uh, my suggestion is we do it Friday and Saturday after the yard sale. So that's what, the tenth and eleventh?
Mm-hmm. That's right.
Yeah. So they'll be here on Friday, usually in the morning, and then they try to pick them up by noon on Saturday. And we're trying to get a price from Carter Miller and from Waste Management to see, to let them know that whoever gives the best price. Because we also have a, to have a dumpster for rag rock.
Can we get a package deal?
That's what we're trying to do. That's what she's working on. If we get a better price, because if we have to have one.
Somebody refresh my number. Where does rag rock come?
Twenty-eight.
June.
July twenty.
July twenty-eight.
July twenty. I have it now.
Yes, and July.
On a Thursday.
Thank you.
I think they're spending a night in Centerville and they're going here and then in Tumble.
Yeah, it's a night in Tumble.
Are we kidding, was that?
I just don't have any desire to write a document.
No, so that-
The tenth and eleventh, two hundred and one.
All right. So I need a motion for that, if I could, please. The citywide cleanup on June tenth and eleventh.
I will make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll start it.
Any other you've scheduled? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right. Any old business?
Uh, last meeting, I asked for the copy of the credit card statement and the receipts concerning that payroll, credit card payroll statement.
It's on there.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, because it wasn't for payroll, but it's, that's how it's still, anything else? You said that.
Come on, I have a list, actually. Hold, hold on, let me look at it. I only have one thing to bring up today. Let me slide it in. Oh, yeah. Um, the water bills, I believe we talked about having to raise the rate soon. Are we gonna address that issue anytime in your-
Probably not until after we find out the final loan number.
Okay.
So it will be, and they're supposed to be finishing up by, they, the goal was the end of this month.
Okay.
Because I know that they've got, we canceled about twenty-five feet someplace up that way and we're gonna add about twenty-five feet over here with the water tower and there. Uh, and so they got, they're just about done at that point. So I, I noticed today that I, we got an email from, uh, French Rinder, asked him when they thought that they would, they would be done. But I know that the goal was to be done in, in April. So if that, hopefully that's true. Uh, just an update on the Bragoon Road. Uh, we had our pre-construction meeting where we went down there in the rain. Didn't rain till we got down there. Uh, and a couple of things, I mean, do you notice they did cut the trees down before April first? Because those had to be down before April first and those trees are down. But, uh, the ditch that they're going to put to gain the water to run to this riser is going to, starts up there before it starts to go around the curb. So most of that water we were concerned about washing down is going to get caught and that ditch is going down to that riser to keep that water. And then they're gonna take the extra dirt. They're gonna run out of extra dirt instead of neat some, they're gonna put it in that valve that's there on the left-hand side of the road to kind of smooth that all a bit. There, uh, the bid was, was dependent, the reason it was so low is it depended upon the fact that they're not gonna run two hundred- There, uh, the, the bid was, was dependent, the reason it was so low is it depended upon the fact that they're not gonna run two hundred and seventy-five trucks. That, because that was the estimate, it'd be two hundred and seventy-five trucks of stuff up and down that road. The bid was they're gonna siphon it out and they go and take it to the farmer's field, so the farmer has asked them that they wait until after turkey season. And then they can, so, so whenever turkey season's over, that's when that part will get started. But that's just sort of an update as far as, any other new business?
Are we looking to build anything to the tractor or...
Uh, I got that and, uh, I, I think my suggestion would be that we just, we're not gonna get an idea, a number until we, till it's there and somebody, is somehow get it in time when it, and take it over there and have them look at it and with the parts they think it is and then say, yes, this is it, this is not it. This won't be a good replacement, and get, cause that's what I'm pushing, we're gonna get a good number.
I wonder if some, if they would send somebody out.
They might.
I mean, they might not.
And you've talked to them.
I talked to Gary, yes.
Would you, uh, maybe just, that's, you'll see if that, that, because that would be easier than having us unload it on something and take it over there.
Well, once you get there, you're pretty well bound to have it down, I guess.
If we drag it over there, we definitely have to have it down.
You might not even make it down.
But hey, what's the, what's the discussion here and there? Any, uh, the new business?
I'm not sure.
Well, I'm sad to say that I would entertain your motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn. I'm all over that one.
Is there a second? Bill said, all of the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.